Okay, being Wednesday, March 6, 2024, 7:00 PM, I call the meeting of the planning board to order. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise their hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. Note, this meeting is being recorded for live broadcast and will be televised replay by born TV. If anyone is audio visual recording, please acknowledge the time. Nobody at all items on within the agenda, meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and our votes. First item on the meeting minutes, uh, the meeting minutes of two, twenty-two, twenty-four. I'll entertain a motion. To approve it. Motion to approve by Liz, second by Jim. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, cause a roll call?
Yes, John.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next on the agenda is public hearing for change to the zoning bylaws to see if the town to vote to amend the born zoning bylaw as follows, or to take any action in relation thereto. A article to see if the town will vote to amend born zoning bylaw section one, two, three, eight, A four, B, traffic internal circulation by deleting twenty-five from the five twenty-seven CMR twenty-five reference, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Palanzie. You want to make any comment on this?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
So, uh, yeah, real quick, um, several years ago, um, the Massachusetts fire code was rearranged and chapter twenty-five, which dealt with the fire department access is now a different section that the town, that the Commonwealth has not accepted. Uh, chapter eighteen now addresses fire department access. And, uh, when I proposed this, I recommended just striking the chapter language altogether so that if it changes again in the future, um, we won't be back in the same situation. Basically, just leaving it as five twenty-seven CMR encompasses the whole fire code. That was all I was looking for.
Yep, yep, and I think we're all under agreement. Anybody from the board have any questions or comments?
No, thank you for the explanation, though.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anybody else identify the motion to adopt the article as posed? Liz makes a motion to approve, obviously, seconded by Jim. Any discussion on the motion to approve? Seeing none requires a roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ponzi.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
You as well.
Thanks.
B article to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw, section one, two, four, two, one enforcement by deleting the word two and replacing the with three, to take any action in relation thereto. And this is for extending special permits. The state allows it up for three years. This just gets us in, in line with the state. That's all that is. Anybody have any questions or comments from the board? In the audience?
I just have one question. Does anybody know why it got? I mean, I know the state made it three, but why? Does anybody know? I'm just curious.
I don't have an answer over the reason why the state increased it or has it a three. I'd entertain a motion.
My motion that we accept it.
Motion by Jim to accept it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim. Any further discussion from the board? The audience? Seeing, hearing none, requires a roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next is C article to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw section twenty-eight, twenty-one downtown district table of allowable uses DT one, DTD one, functional standards and special permit criteria for home occupation office use by deleting forty-one, twenty in its entirety and replacing the same with forty-one, ten, or to take any action thereto. And this is just a clerical correction because this has written put you in a different sector. This home occupancy or home office put you at forty, forty-one, twenty, and it's actually forty-one, ten. So it just clarifies that to put you in the right spot. That's all that is. Any questions for the, for the board? From the audience? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we accept the article.
Motion to adopt the article. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion on the motion? The board, from the audience? Seeing, hearing none, requires a roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next on the agenda is the the article to see the vote, uh, the town will vote to amend born zoning bylaw section thirty-three, forty-three interim egress control by deleting until July, uh, June one, twenty-twenty, or if earlier, or take any other action in relation thereto. Jen, you want to explain this one?
Uh, yes, this is for, uh, back, I believe it was two thousand and nine, this original part of the zoning bylaw was adopted and, um, in twenty-twenty, it was updated. And it says that until, um, an access highway from MacArthur Boulevard to the Mid-Cape Highway is created, then there are very specific criteria, for putting driveways along scenic highway and sandwich road. So it'll control, control how many curb cuts are put in.
So by deleting this, has fewer curb cuts or less chance of putting a curb cut?
Then there's no sunset.
Right.
In there.
Right.
Oh, so it's just the sun setting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. So we're retaining something that exists and trying to not have it sunset.
Correct.
Yes.
Right, continue the enforcement.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any board members? From the audience? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Liz makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Second by Jim? Any further discussion on board? Audience seeing none, requires a roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. Give it, give it a second. Thank you. Next is E article to see if the town will vote to amend the following sections of the born zoning bylaw for accessory dwelling amendments or to take any other action in relation thereto. Section twenty-two, twenty, use regulation schedule, section twenty-eight, twenty-one downtown district table of allowable uses, table DTD one, section twenty-eight, fifty-three, table of required parking spaces, table DTD three, section forty-one, twenty, forty-one, twenty-three, or through forty-one, twenty-three, accessory dwellings and section five definitions. I'd like to try to do this from the top down. So if we, we go that route and we can always come back if we want to reference back, but let's see if we can do that. So if we.
Julia's gonna share the screen. I think so people, the audience could see.
Yeah.
Just taking a second to load that in.
So I'm, the audience members, if you, if, when I ask for the audience member, he's got any comments, you guys might have to put your mic on because it might be difficult to see a hand up. So if you can work with us, we'll try to get full cooperation. So what we'll do is if we want to go twenty-two, twenty, use regulation schedule in the district, accessory uses in the R forty, if you want to take a look at that, if you get any questions or comments with that. We'll take a look at forty-one, twenty, accessory dwelling. Now, in forty-one, twenty-one, what I'd like to do is we go forty-one, twenty-one development requirements, we'll go with A.
I have. So the reason why we're striking in conformance with section twenty-four, fifty, which there was a lot of discussion about at the last meeting. So if we strike that, but we keep the other section, forty-one, twenty-one, F?
Yep.
My concern is, um, lots that are larger than five thousand square feet, but are still, you know, and I guess I could just go back to the example of my house. Our yard is ten thousand, was ten thousand square feet. When we had to go through the process with the ZBA, we actually drove a whole bunch of plans, did the application. We have setbacks on three sides with the streets. One neighbor wasn't working out. Had to go back, redraw all the plans, but with this in place, we could essentially pull back, throw in a kitchen. And we could have put on more house and there wouldn't be any issue with the neighbor as far as our height and everything. And it would be, I think this is going to cause, something like that could create kind of a loophole that's going to cause issues in these dense neighborhoods that we have where, you know, five thousand of lots, but there's a lot of areas where some of those little lots are double, double size, you know, and I just, um, without, there's got to be a way to trigger so the neighbors or the butters are informed of what's going on and there's a little bit. No.
Okay.
No, we could have gone higher.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, and we don't have a height, we have a height limit, but we don't have any, um, we don't have any bylaws to protect views, nor do I think, you know, I think that's opening up a can of worms. But, you know, with neighbors, it's with these neighborhoods, it's just, I think it's going to cause a little bit of trouble with, but it's just going to cause space and some, because I can't imagine with someone like Jim Ashburn Island, there's nothing going on with.
I, looking at with A, I think the intent here is to try to get accessory dwelling units by right. For the most part, I'm not saying, you know, like, like you said, we have F in there. It, well, actually we have D. D triggers, you got to go to twenty-four, fifty.
Yeah, would it make sense to combine those two things so that A says one of, I mean, is allowing it by right on a certain size lot exactly what we're doing here? We're allowing it by right on a blah, blah, blah sized lot, lot, but otherwise they have to go to twenty-four, fifty?
I'm just trying to see if there's a trigger.
That's not by right.
D. He would trigger.
It's like, why is it over here?
Five thousand square feet.
Do you want to go to seventy-five hundred? I, I'm asking.
It's gotta be bigger than five thousand square.
John. I think what we determined was that eighty-two percent of the lots in town would not meet a larger sized lot configuration and would fall under twenty-four, fifty. So as far as streamlining, from my perspective and experience, the smaller lots are going to be more limited by setbacks, septic, even in some of the flood zone areas, it'll just be prohibitive. So I think the nature of a small lot and its capacity for adding space to it and so forth will probably inhibit secondary accessory dwellings as a separate structure, but may allow for, within the footprint of the existing primary dwell. Whether it's a garage that's converted or, you know, a daylight basement that might qualify for some space.
So you're saying eighty-five percent is, is what?
Nonconforming. They don't meet the requirements.
Right.
Not conforming lot.
So what size?
Anything under forty thousand.
Yeah, right, but I'm saying, I, I just think five thousand is too small. I think there's, there's a lot of dense neighborhoods where it is not conforming because the houses have been built and the lines have been drawn and they're close. And I think something has to trigger, uh, the neighbors being notified and going through some kind of a process where it's not just giving them a building permit because.
D would do that for a lot, five thousand or less.
I know, but I think it should be a bigger lot for the minimum.
Doesn't, excuse me, I should know, but five thousand square feet is roughly how much is acreage? Anybody?
Oh, it's not even an acre.
It's a, it's a.
Yeah. Fifty feet by a hundred and our, in our neighborhood.
I'm just using my lot for reference.
Well, my lot's literally a hundred by a hundred. It's a square.
Yeah.
A lot behind is half, and there's a lot of, there's a lot, and, and that repeats. I'm just at the top circuit half, the bottom of circuit half, that repeats all over the place and I, and it's.
There's some tight streets down there.
Yeah, and there's other neighborhoods where that happens and it's near the water and people have money to sink into this stuff.
And the most likely location should be.
Ten thousand square foot lots and.
But also, I think, the discussion we had last time, the smaller lot, you're only going to get, the maximum you can do is fifty percent of your accessory dwelling unit. That's the most you can get is fifty percent of the existing property. And even though we're allowed up to, it is now, it says to a maximum of fifteen hundred square feet, but that's the lot, the size of the house, if it's, if it's a thousand square foot house, you only get fifty percent, you're only going to get five hundred square feet. So you, it's not like you're building a big addition on to a, I mean, you're not doubling the size of the house. You can't.
But we could have added, we could have added three hundred more square feet to what we've done in our lot. And I, I just, I can just imagine what that would look like. That's, that's still allowing for a lot.
But would you have, would you have the setbacks to be able to do, you know, a lot of this is going to be driven by the setbacks as well?
I want to keep my trees too. I could have done a lot more. I mean, that was part of it. And we moved the septic anyway. We had to move the septic. That's a big project, I know, but sometimes you got to do that because it's just,
but.
It's concerning because bottom line is this is going to cause, maybe it's not going to be a boom, but it's going to cause more work. Someone's going to have to break, someone has to enforce all this. Good, good, this is probably going to require someone else to be hired to cover this and enforce it all. Because we're leaning on a lot of, okay, that's covered, that's covered, that's covered, but who approves that? You know, who's, the planning department is filling.
Yeah, we go through the building.
Around itself.
Do it all.
Like, like any building permit.
Right, yeah.
It's a building permit process.
I think a lot of the towns had the same concerns and probably had to address something similar to twenty-four, fifty and the other parts of the towns. And I think they probably came to the conclusion that the need is so great. And by limiting the percentage of the primary dwell septic, casser and setbacks, like you mentioned on your law, if you have three roadways, it's a huge setback. That, that is enough of a limiting factor to keep things to be scalable for the lots. But if all the other towns have found a way to make this a, um, viable zoning, and again, I understand about enforcement because we lean on our building commissioner for enforcement and all that, but those are the things that are in place, so we kind of have to depend on those. And usually it's a neighbor that calls and says they got weekly turnover there. Can you come down? And it's kind of self policing in many home aspects.
Yeah.
But I think that, you know, we are really the last one in line here to try to help solve this problem of affordable housing. And this could create long-term affordable housing with twelve-month leases and some workforce housing with, you know, ninety-day minimums that, um, from my perspective, being a builder, the cost to build the dwellings is prohibitive. So if you're going to be in a five hundred or six hundred square foot maximum ADU, the cost would really be prohibitive to go forward and construct that, to expand your septic if you could do it and so forth. So I think it's all kind of self policing by lot size in many ways.
Well, I, I, I don't know. I just, you've got nonconforming lots where the house is going to be not in any package in the middle and you don't have that room and you're going to be building off, say, but your neighbor, you're only a foot off the property line at one side because the house has been there forever. It doesn't mean that you're going to be constricted by any setbacks. And, uh, there are people in my neighborhood that spent, I don't know how much money, redoing their septic and lifting it up for a tiny little house with a bathroom and an outdoor shower. And it's on a poster stamp, but I don't think the money is going to restrict anybody in some of these neighborhoods either. So I, I, I think we need it. I think we need the ADU. I'm not saying I'm not in favor of that, but I guess my concern is that, um, it's going to.
It's not perfect.
Yeah, that, I just don't want to have.
I, I think demand for the accessory dwelling unit in the restrictions that we have built in outweigh currently some of the concerns about the twenty-four, fifty. And like anything else, we, we tightened it up with twenty-four, fifty. We're trying to release it now. And if it becomes a burden, we can always address it and then restrict it some more. But I think we should open up for the accessory dwelling units and see how it goes. Because again, we're, we're one of the last on the cake to get it by right.
Oh, yeah.
And, and there is a huge need for year-round housing.
I have a question. For Gene.
Yes.
If, what would have happened if you had the three hundred extra square feet? What, what, what would your neighbor have been, because you would have gone higher? Where would you have been?
That wouldn't have been included. Be a butters list. Nobody would, everybody came to the.
So you would have built it to the height that you would have built it higher if you could have. And that's the primary thing that you're worried about.
It's not the height necessarily.
Notification to neighbors.
It's a notification of the neighbors and just, um,
Because.
Because of these dense neighborhoods where the houses are really close and everything and it's just, I can just see in some areas where it's going to cost trouble. So I would just say if we could just bump the square footage up a little bit, you said seventy-five hundred?
I've just suggested.
Or just, just a little.
Okay.
It's kind of like so subjective.
Five thousand is so small, you're hardly going to have any.
That's what I mean. That's where the lot, that's where the lot drives the size or the, the ability or inability.
Yeah.
To put an accessory dwelling in or not.
More so the inability.
Right.
Right.
The smaller the lot, the less chance you're going to be able to get.
Saying that's not even a, that's not as much of a concern because we have limitations in place now. You know, this isn't making any difference. You know, I, I would like to see the number a little bit bigger just because I just, that five thousand square foot lot, that's.
So you want to, you basically want to say.
But the highway village, I mean.
That's, that's.
I, I don't think, I think that's completely out. I'm not saying it's impossible. I, I don't know, but that's, that's very tight.
Go downtown onset.
Yeah.
Try to drive down on a, on a normal day, never mind a summer day.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, I wish I could park there.
But I mean, if you raise that, if you're basically, we weren't, and I'm learning in the learning process. So we were keeping it five thousand, say yes, but if we just say to raise it to seventy-five hundred, basically, which is telling people, no, you can't build the ADU. Because one, you don't have.
There's lots of people that are larger than seventy-five hundred that can't. We're not saying you can't build an ADU.
Yeah, I mean, a tenth of an acre, it's like.
It's not, that's.
That's the state minimum lot size.
Right, so it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that, and that's where the, the number comes from.
And that's where it comes from.
Yeah.
How many houses are on a tenth of an acre?
We don't have many five thousand square foot lots. I mean, they exist.
They're in our, yeah, like in my neighbors, there's some neighbors, yeah, there's not, it's not a lot. That's what I mean. It's, I, I just think there's more situations where it's a little bit of a bigger lot where because there's not conformity issue, but it would be an issue for the neighbors.
If you look at section, if you want to your chairman, if you look at section F, when, so the ADU is attached, detached, and it can be no greater than fifty percent of the existing primary dwelling. Um, and floor area is calculated as first or second floor basements, fifty percent above grade attics and garages. So what, so the accessory can be no more than fifty percent of that. So when I started to do out, um, kind of scenarios, I realized, I, I don't think the lot size matters. The size of the accessory is going to be driven by this percentage.
Okay.
Want to ask you're talking about?
Mm-hmm. So on a smaller lot, say somebody has a twelve hundred square foot house, they can only do five ninety-nine.
Yeah, I know.
Or you could reduce the size, you could reduce the percentage if, if that would help control.
But you're more interested with notification.
It's because you, you just, because there's so many variations of what can happen.
But in the same scenario, if you get a billing permit and you would, and you would to, to build on your house, whatever the limit might be, you don't notify your neighbor.
I know.
And I think that's what we're trying to do is by right.
Right, well, yeah, that is.
So I, and, and again, we, if, if, if it becomes, because again, we, we added the twenty-four, fifty, did twenty-four, fifty, we can, and then it tightened everything up years ago. We're trying to, on just on the accessory dwelling unit, we're trying to loosen it up now. And if it becomes a burden and the town would like to change it or ask us to take a look at it and tighten it up, we can do that. But I think right now, I think the need outweighs because there is such a need for year-round housing. It's all being taken up by Airbnb and stuff like that, you know, short-term rentals that we don't have the long-term rentals for, for dwelling units.
Yes.
Julian.
Uh, audience member has a question.
Who is that?
MJ, Mr. MJ.
MJ, I'm sorry. MJ?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, um, so I'm looking at twenty-four, fifty, and there's a ta, uh, table, twenty-four, fifty-six, which deals with less than six thousand. What I'm concerned about is if you have limitations on small, nonconforming lots for primary dwellings, why would you change that for the ADU? I mean, but I, I actually think that it should be in conformance with twenty-four, fifty. If they have room based on the size of their dwelling to come into section twenty-four, fifty, it's by right, but other than that, there are so many variances that have to happen for all of these things that it becomes, it becomes a question of, oh, I can't add on to my house, but I can add an accessory dwelling.
Right.
And, and I think conformity, having one standard is better than bifurcating the standard and having different standards for different things. I, I think A should just be in conformance with twenty-four, fifty. And I don't think there's going to be that much difference, but it simplifies the criteria. Just my thought.
Yes, but what we're trying to do is get it by right and not by special permit. Like.
Well, don't say that. If it's in conformance with twenty-four, fifty, you get it by right, not by special permit. I mean, if it meets those criteria in twenty-four, fifty for six thousand, twenty-five percent, whatever.
Yeah.
Then you get it by right. If, I'm fine with that. But not making it, not giving them a bump up that could be problematic and then challenged because someone who has a six thousand lot can't add the same amount of square footage unless they do it as this way. So it's just my thought. I, I don't have a problem with the by right. I think it's great by right. I totally support the ADU. But I think consistency of measurements is important.
Right, but again, looking back, if eighty-two percent of the single-family lots require a special permit for accessory dwellings as it currently stands, and we're trying to eliminate that so we get it by right. In doing it.
Maybe I'm not, maybe I'm not expressing myself properly. My concern is that one accessory dwelling is permitted by right use to a lawful, single-family use on the same lot as long as it meets the criteria of twenty-four, fifty-six table.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. You have to meet the same criteria, whether it's a single-family dwelling or accessory dwelling. I, it's, I, it's fine with it by right, but less than six hun, six thousand square feet, maximum gross coverage is twenty-five percent, maximum lot coverage twenty-five percent, maximum build heighting twenty-five feet. So that's all I'm saying. Consistent measurements.
Yep. Does have any questions? John?
I have to make a comment.
Got it.
I know this is an existing zoning, uh, that you're referring to, MJ. We're, we're really trying to take a fresh look as, you know, has started some years back with the KCON Commission to address a problem that is different than the one these regulations were written for. And that is a housing crisis here in town. And we will be the last town in Barnstable County to address this, uh, in this way. And we will be the last town in Barnstable County to address this, uh, in this way. So I understand the reference back to the zoning that was written some time ago for other purposes for primary residences. But I think this fresh look is really meaningful. For encouraging creation of additional housing for town, primarily long-term affordable housing. By virtue of the size of the accessory dwelling unit.
And without subsidy.
Yeah.
Somebody else have a hand up? So that's, okay, Sue.
Hi, um, so I'm Sue Ross from Pocasset, uh, and I'm on the. Uh, Housing Trust and Higher Housing Partnership Committees. I just wanted to say that number, number one, I thank.
You froze off.
We'll wait.
Come on back, Sue. Did you bounce out?
Hello? Hi.
Okay, Sue, is that Sue?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, you're back.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, so anyway, I, I, again, I want to thank the commit, um, the planning board for doing this. Um, and, and as John said, uh, it's so important, we're, we're one of the only towns, if not the only town on the Cape that hasn't done this. And, um, one of the things about affordable housing, no matter what, I understand, um, the person's, um. W- wanting, uh, neighbors to have some kind of impact or say in the matter, but. Whenever you mention affordable housing, the neighbors are not going to be rallying around it, um. Most of the time, so, and to ensure it, we have to have it by right and. And I understand everybody's suggestions, but I think, um, this is a good plan and, um, I'm hopeful. That we just keep it by right and, and not. And, and not make it any more complicated. That's it.
No, thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Thank you. So what I'd like to do is to go. To, again, we can always come back. Look, we can hear the debates and we can make changes along the way or come back and make changes. But if we go to B. On the septic capacity or sewage steam satisfactory, we're happy with that. C. Parking. If anybody from the audience has anything, just please speak up. D. It's a minimum lot size five thousand to refer back to twenty-four fifty. Yeah, we can always come back. The maximum size of an accessory dwelling is fifteen hundred square feet and. And contain no more than two bedrooms. We talked at our last meeting, the thousand, two, the zoning board of appeals would like to have more than, than a thousand. And there was some discussion about bringing it down to without maybe fifteen, so. Think it's a good compromise between a thousand and two thousand, right? That's why, that's why that number is there. It's a compromise. F. That's the fifty percent of the existing primary single-family dwelling floor area. D was the chart that we originally talked, that was discussed lightly or a little bit at our last meeting. That we talked about the one thousand, fifteen hundred, two thousand by lot size, and then some discussion was the lot itself will. Will demand how, how much you can or cannot get. So that's why that, that has been eliminated. G.
Chairman, if you ask, okay, I'm going back to the number E, I think I'll add an S on contains.
Okay.
That's.
Okay. Change it.
And then, um, in section G, um. Sentence number two, I'm going to change apartment to dwelling. With the terminology. And then, um, in the last line. Um, where it says lots created under forty-six hundred open space community, I'm going to insert, um, under section forty-six hundred. So I'm going to insert the word section there.
Okay.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, oh, thank you. The H. H is added grandfathering for any of the other accessory dwellings that were created prior to this one, so that they know where they stand. Going to forty-one twenty-two occupancy requirements. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
That was good discussion. Did you have any comments on that one?
Yes, thank you. Do you, uh, so the end of the sentence, it says either the principal or the accessory unit must be owner occupied. Except for temporary absences, and this was something, um, we talked about with the housing partnership and the trust and MJ as well. Should except for temporary absences be deleted?
Yes, because I, I don't care if it's owner occupied, I don't care if they're there one day. Every ten years or if they're there every day.
You can't regulate that.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
As long as they're owner occupied, as long as they're not renting out both units.
Right.
To Jane Doe and John Doe. Think it's our intent. And B.
B, it says an accessory unit, I'm going to change that to dwelling. And then I'll add and primary dw- primary dwelling.
Where is that?
To, um, I think if it's just primary dwelling was missing out of it, so it'll say an accessory dwelling and primary dwelling authorized under this provision. Shall not be used for the short term and all that.
Okay. C. Yeah, I, and the intent of that is short-term rentals.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to delete out, um, for periods. It says for periods no shorter than ninety days at a time, and I'm going to delete out no. So it'll save for periods shorter. Than ninety days at a time. So, thank you MJ for that one.
Yeah.
Uh, D. You know, that, that's so you can't separate it, build it, and then divide it. And then forty-one twenty-three. And then twenty-eight twenty, the allowable uses, and in the chart. Under the table DT D one. It goes from special permit to permitted. Cause that's what that's showing. And then table twenty-eight fifty-three.
It's accessory dwelling in it instead of accessory.
Yes, and then on the twenty-eight fifty-three table, required parking spaces. Town district. We have to put under residential uses accessory dwelling unit. In the chart.
Take out live work.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Under section five definitions.
Can I just point that out? So, um, there's, so the required parking in, uh, downtown district. Only requires one space per dwelling unit. In the other section, um, it requires two spaces per bedroom. I don't know if you want to change that to be consistent with the other part of the downtown or.
One space per bedroom.
One space per dwelling unit, yeah.
And in our other, it's one per bedroom.
Yeah, uh, yeah, one per bedroom. Um, but I don't know if the downtown is a little bit, you know, you get parking credits, a little bit more lenient. So I don't know if you want to change that to a minimum of one space per bedroom.
I think to encourage that, uh. We could use the existing since there is, uh, public parking.
Right, everywhere, okay.
So.
I mean, that's kind of the point of the downtown.
Yes, yes.
And the accessory dwelling, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to drive the one-bedroom, one-car kind of thing.
Well, I think, uh, the housing is.
Yeah. Okay, but we can't control, but that, that's the intent is.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Under section five definitions. Accessory building. Accessory dwelling unit.
Accessory dwelling unit, change building to accessory dwelling unit. I think I put building there only because if they, if they want to put an accessory. There's a detached garage and they want to put an accessory above it, then it's not an accessory dwelling unit, it's a.
How about attached and detached? Could you just use that? Somehow? Isn't that what you're doing here? One is attached and one is detached?
With accessory dwelling building covering?
It does, because then it goes back to the definition of the accessory building, which is an accessory to the primary dwelling.
Yeah. Yeah. How about accessory use?
Well, it says accessory use in the definition.
And I put in there, it does not include ADUs.
Dwelling unit. Rational ownership. And my only question is. The cost of an asset or property is split among individuals, each getting a share. Should it be individuals, corporations, LLCs? At all?
Yeah. I agree.
And corporate entities.
That's limited liability corporations.
So there's the Inc.
Yeah.
S Corps and all that, okay.
I mean, would it.
And they say at all, whatever.
Yeah, that's good.
Trust.
Yeah.
A trust could be a family trust.
Corporate entities. Corporate trusts.
Yeah, LLCs.
Right, um, so individuals, corporate entities, and corporate trusts. Town council.
I was just gonna ask.
Verify it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, it, I'd also accept that if town council, you know, we. Go look at this, that if town council wants to modify that definition. It's we, they understand what we want. But I put the legal ease into it. I think if we'd have the leeway, we'd ask for the leeway. Okay, so going back to the front. How, how do we, as now we've amended it, corrected it, modified it. How do, how do we feel about what we have now?
I'm still not comfortable with the square footage. I've just been looking at the table, Harwich, they're May two thousand twenty-three, they've updated, they have no. Lot size requirements. Special permit there is triggered when it's a pre-existing, non-conforming setback for a lot coverage. And I think that would help.
That would still be eighty-two percent of our.
That's, but that's a non-conforming lot.
Yep.
Not, this, this is non-conforming setback. So that's the house where the house is placed.
I think.
Non-conforming lot is one.
I think if you have a non-conforming setback, you would not be allowed to make it a more non-conforming.
Correct.
Yeah, correct.
So that might address that.
That's, but they have that in their recs that they've added to May two thousand twenty-three, so that's a change they made there. Otherwise, the other towns, that's, Brewster is thirty thousand square feet, special permit for thirty thousand. Dennis is fifteen thousand.
Does he found with a seventy?
They have, or they have setbacks, dimensional required, not setbacks. There's, there's, it seems like there's another way to.
Right here, just as you know. Har- Harwich, Balmouth, and.
Cause Balmouth has a minimum lot size of seventy-five hundred square feet.
Yeah, I, I think that's.
Well, I think you're, it's an interesting thing to talk about the non-conforming setbacks.
So a question.
I got answers.
If we went on to seventy-five hundred square foot. What's the percentage of people that are not going to conform due to the setbacks?
How many seventy-five hundred square foot lots do we have or less in town is the question?
Probably not that many.
Well, there'd be a number of them.
Yeah, there's a.
Seventy-five hundred, I think, still give relief to people that are in small neighborhoods. As I said, the, you, I don't know, even my house in Shore Road, it's hundred feet, I mean, that's. So seventy-five hundred, I, I think it's, I think we have to do something like that. For these smaller neighborhoods.
But the smaller neighborhoods wouldn't. I mean, they'd have less than seventy-five hundred square feet. But their neighbors are closer, so their setbacks are closer.
It's, it happens anyway. I mean, that's, a lot of these neighborhoods, that's where some of these places want to add on. Turn their she barn into a summer house and so on and so on, and close in their porches, they're sneaking doing it now. I think seventy-five hundred is better, and if we find it's too restrictive, we can change it. I think that's easier than making it more restrictive as an afterthought. We still have to get two-thirds vote, and we need support for this.
Oh, no, I get it.
I.
I still think that, uh, least restrictive is the way to encourage people to do this. I know seventy-five hundred may seem like a lot to you, I don't know how big your lot is.
It's not by a hundred, it's ten thousand square feet, so.
I was gonna say seventy-five by a hundred, you're seventy-five.
So the people next to me are five thousand square feet.
Yeah.
They really can't do much anyway, it's like a non-issue. Right, if you're a little bit bigger, they're going to do something, and they could try and do an ADO, ADU, and maybe get more out of it. And I, that's, that's my concern, so, um. We still have to get two-thirds vote, and I really don't see, I think people in town want this, I think they're eager to vote for this. So I think making it more restrictive is not going to make people not want to support this. I think we'll still get a two-thirds vote.
And you still got a pretty significant. Group of people who could do this.
Right.
Right?
Right.
I mean, seventy-five hundred is pretty small. I guess I've just never paid this.
And I think five thousand square foot, you know, with that situation, they're going to be maybe less likely to do an ADU. In the long run, I think we need to just start with that, and as these other towns have done, we can go back and change it. We can take the square foot thing out altogether and put a different kind of restriction in there.
Because the way. If we go to seventy-five hundred square, square feet, as, as you mentioned. That would not prohibit somebody with a five thousand or six thousand or seventy-five hundred square foot lot. Applying an ADU, they just have to now go to the fourth zoning board of appeal.
Correct, correct, and if you're going to go through that kind of work to put that on a small lot.
But there's still.
Is it that you'd like to prevent that from going on small?
I just think. I just think in these neighborhoods where there's small lots and it's. It's just going to cause trouble and it'll create a. It'll create a loophole in a sense, in a sense, but I I just think we need to go up higher, it's it's too much for these downstairs.
Now.
One of the lots are like.
How about if we do what we did with the marijuana thing? Want to make a motion to change any one of these, we'll put up a vote. Whatever wins, wins. Fair enough? I mean, we could argue all night.
Right.
Let's debate it, no, that's fine.
And I just want to say one other thing, because I have, for some reason, been sitting here all my imagining. Very small, narrow, you know, things fitting in that are very tall. Not very, very tall, but a twenty five foot, you know. I don't know if that's what we want either, and it feels like what you're talking about. Is a, is a solution to that, because I'd like the ZBA. So I'm closely at how you're going to handle that on a smaller lot, I thought that's.
That's the point, yeah. Okay, so I make a motion that we. Make a change.
Hold on, hold on.
Sorry.
Sorry, I'm gonna cut.
Sue Ross has a comment.
Okay, can I ask Sue before you make a motion, Jean?
Yes, the only comment I, the only comment I have on this is that. You know, small lots not near the water, there's parts of Monument Beach, parts of Pocasset, there may be. The people who are on those small lots are probably going to do, want to do this without adding on. They're going to do it within their house, like if they have a raised ranch, they're going to do it within their house. So does this mean? If they have a five thousand square foot lot and just want to. Put it in their house, that now they're not going to be able to do that?
They'd have to go to the zoning board of appeals.
And and these are people that probably can't afford to get someone to help them go through the zoning board of appeals, I mean, there's. We have a lot of senior citizens that want to do this so they can afford to stay in their house. So we're not necessarily talking about people with these big houses on on small lots. We're maybe talking about smaller houses with people that are going to do this. For affordable housing, maybe, but mostly because it's going to help them stay, and they're already. In an affordable house circumstance, so I mean, I I think compromise is good, but I just want to throw that out there.
Thank you, Sue.
I I definitely appreciate that, and I actually don't live on the water, I live on Shore Road, so. But the. I mean, even for the building permit process, they'd still have to go through and have plans drawn and so on, so. It's, it's an additional step, but. I don't think it's an unreasonable expense, I I know any expense, when you're looking at hundreds, you know. Is is too much, can be too much, but.
Does MJ have a question?
It's not really a question, it's really a comment, so. My comments before about twenty four fifty were not to create a special permit situation. It was more to look at the same numbers. Like you have. You have numbers that you think are reasonable for coverage. And so. How do we say that? This five thousand square foot lot. Or six thousand square foot lot. You're allowed twenty five percent coverage by right? And so if you're, that would mean you're redoing what you have already. As opposed to creating, adding on, and I think that's kind of the crux of what I'm getting at. I don't have a problem with it.
Got surgery.
If it's within the numbers, but if it's outside the numbers, then what does that mean?
Dan?
Thank you, Chairman, MJ, I just wanted to say, so, so this section, this table two, four, five, six would not apply to this section. But you would have to meet the twenty percent for lot coverage under section twenty five hundred. For dimensional.
I, in this by right thing?
Yeah, you couldn't go over the twenty percent lot coverage.
Okay, thank you.
So, try to cut you off, Jean, floor yours.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we increase the minimum lot size from five thousand square feet to seventy five hundred square feet in section. Forty one twenty one.
Yeah, you got a motion, Jean, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, any discussion on the motion to increase the minimum lot size from five thousand square feet? And less than five thousand square feet requires, so it would be. So the max minimum lot size is seventy five hundred square feet, and less than seventy five hundred square feet requires a conformance with section twenty four fifty. That's the motion. Any discussion on the motion from the board? From the audience?
No. I'm still wondering. I'm gonna go with a no.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm gonna say no.
Okay. So go back to.
We're back as amended.
And then.
Got a quick question, if we can come back and adjust that.
At any time.
But you have to have a town meeting.
Yeah, we, we can't do it with the board, it has to go back to town meeting. Yep. With that. As the dwelling, accessory dwelling unit article. Has. Modified for tonight, you know, some of the corrections and modifications. I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the accessory dwelling unit zoning as presented with the edits that were discussed and agreed upon.
Motion made, do I have a second, motion made, second, any further discussion on the motion from the board? From the audience? Seeing here now requires a roll call.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes. With nothing left on the agenda, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Hold on, hold on. I got something that's been thrown at me.
I just wanted to mention that the CPTC conference is March eighth, and if any board members want to. Yep. So that's coming up, so the registration is is due like very soon.
Could you email that out?
Yeah, happy to.
Okay. Let's hold it frost.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Yeah, they have a lot of stuff.
That's a good one.
That's a bunch of stuff this time.
The date again?
March sixteenth, Saturday.
Yeah, I have here. That's, that's why I've been looking at them.
With nothing left on the agenda, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Do I have a second, motion made, second, not debatable.
Yes.
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 Sixteen.
You want to discuss that motion?
Thank you.
Eddie.